We'll call the meeting to order at 2:30. And the notice, the meeting was properly posted, February 23rd. Meetings, the minutes were posted. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Move we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Item number four, discussion possible action for approval of the February 2017 defined benefit payroll. Among their 129 checks to be issued for 129, 129 checks to be issued for 129 participants in the amount of $143,210.75 as requested by myself, county clerk, and secretary to the retirement board.
Move we approve.
Second.
All opposed, in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed, items carried. Number five, discussion possible action for approval of security tariff and interest report for January 2017. Mark Scykel, chief of investment, Oklahoma County Treasurer's office will address this item. Mark Scykel here.
If there is time to any questions.
Have we been taking these just one vote?
It's a new improvement's concern.
I want to move five through eight.
Okay, motion has been made to approve five through eight. All?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed. Item nine, discussion possible action for approval for defined contribution retirement and health benefits to John Westall. Application number 17 dash 06, effective date, February 24th, 2017.
Move we approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, hearings, and motions passed. Discussion possible action for approval of defined contribution retirement benefits for James Sappel. Application number 17 dash 06, effective date, February 24th, 2017.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um, eleven, discussion possible action to receive monthly updated OK forfeiture account activity and projections as requested by myself. Danny?
All right, quick update on the monthly forfeiture account. We ended the month of January with a balance of $743,953. Uh, the forfeitures for the month of January, they're actually the lowest forfeitures month I've seen since I've been doing this report for about 10 years. Uh, $9,956. We average monthly approximately $87,000 a month, so we only had four accounts that were forfeited during the month of January.
When are they effectively forfeited, just out of curiosity? Like, if I send you a letter saying that person terminated effective January 31st, is that when we consider it forfeited? Or do we hold it for six months before we consider it forfeited? I'm just curious.
Uh, it's forfeited a month after termination.
A month after termination. And then if they come back within the six months, we just put the money back in, is that it?
Uh, I don't believe that it's gonna, uh, no.
No, it's forfeited.
It's forfeited, what forfeited, it's gone. Isn't that correct?
Gone.
Yeah.
They're still vested, but their money's gone.
I'm sorry.
They're still vested, so they're betting bridges, but their money's gone, so they'll back again.
And they have to spend four, five more years to get in, get back in.
It goes back, it, so, in other words, I thought that if they came back within, uh, whether our, our plan document says if it came back within six months or a year, the money was put back in, is that what it's about?
Mm-hmm, at their service period.
The service, what it means is that they don't lose their years of service, they just lose the money.
Yeah. They wouldn't just lose the years of service, serving no matter what? Our plan allows them to?
If, if they left longer than 12 months, then they have to start over, because that's...
The vesting schedule starts over.
Okay, so in other words, the vesting period, if you come back within the year, but the money doesn't get placed back in?
Right, that's correct. It's forfeited that day.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So just projecting out the rest of the year, we project we'll end the year with maybe, $8,021,317. Uh, the next item only intended is to approve of the $400,000 for the redirections for the old plan, so obviously that would come off the total. And then if we do another $400,000, we're looking at, you know, ending the year with approximately, little more than $200,000 in this account.
Okay, is there any questions?
Do you accept the report?
Is there a motion?
Currently, there's how much in there?
Uh, the $743,953.
Okay, so if we, and you're, you're projecting out a million 21?
Yes.
Roughly, okay.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, it's carried. Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding the Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners choosing defined, no? He discussed 12. Do, do I need to do this? Okay, sorry. Um, no, item 12, discussion and possible act for approval of a redirection of retirement contribution to the amount of $400,000 to the defined benefit plan to be invested by the county treasurer with an effective date. This item is requested by myself, county clerk. There, I understand there was a motion.
This is, I think we spoke last month, and we spoke, we didn't have a specific amount, and this would allow, uh, so obviously we couldn't pass it. So this would basically take $400,000 from the forfeiture account and put it in the defined benefit account so that, uh, is more fiscally sound, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, so the motion is to move through with $400,000.
A move we approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item 13, discussion possible action regarding the Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners choosing the defined contribution investment manager vendor. This item is requested by General Lively, member of the retirement board.
So the reason I put this on here is we obviously not had a chance to discuss this on this board, and I'm left with a lot of questions. I've been somehow left out of a loop on any correspondence that, that the commissioners really received from the district attorney's office regarding this, and finally found out that they'd taken action last week. The questions I have, I think, need to be answered by someone, and, and eventually I want to get to the point that, uh, we determine whether or not we can send this up for an opinion from someone else. But, but my non-lawyer mind has been going through the, the stuff for how we face the decision that the board of county commissioners have the authority to do this, and have lots of questions left. The first thing when I look at the district attorney's letter, they cite that the, it's only natural that they have the authority to do so, because under Title 19, 956.2, the only way that this could be paid for is by the general fund. When I look at that, and again, I'm certainly no attorney, but I look at that and it says that, and I'll read it. "Set costs associated with operation of a defined contribution retirement system shall be paid for by the county from the county general fund as defined by Section 331 of Title 62 of Oklahoma State Statute," which I looked at and didn't see anything that prevented us from going with or from any monies available which are not specifically prohibited from being used for this purpose. I couldn't find anywhere in there that this forfeiture account would be prohibited by, would be prohibited to pay the, the cost of, uh, of this, this program or this, this contract. So it appears to me that the, the retirement board does have money available that they are in control of, and, and does not break any state laws by using it to pay that. What am I missing for correction?
I wasn't aware that the retirement board intended to pay for it, or any other sources in the general fund, and you've been using your forfeitures to go to your defined benefit.
Well, regardless of what our intention was, your letter says that it can only be paid for by the general fund, and that's not what I read the state law whatsoever. Is, is, am I wrong?
Well, those questions would have to be addressed through the research by us, but they haven't been posed to us before now. We'll be happy to look into it if, if you'd like us to, just need you to do a request for legal services, and we'll be happy to look at that.
Okay, is that not what the, the board of county commissioners asked for, when they asked your opinion on whether or not they have the authority to override?
Not in terms of what fund would be payable out of it.
I think they, you, they were requesting they had the authority to, to make the decision, and from what I understand, they did have the authority because they...
Well, as I read this letter, she's faking their, their authority on the fact that they have to pay for it.
Not entirely, no, sir.
I, I think you guys are saying two different things.
I think you are too.
Okay, would you, would you like to make a formal request?
Well, I have some other questions too, that I don't understand too. And, and again, I'm certainly no attorney, so it's, and, and for me to try to discern this is certainly above my pay grade, but...
Will Jam, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
Would the forfeiture accounts support costs associated with it?
Absolutely, if we redirected the cost of the defined benefit to the, the general...
Then the defined benefit would suffer.
Not necessarily, the, if, if we take the same amount of money that we're putting into the, the defined, or defined contribution plan, and put it into the defined benefit plan, it'd be a wash.
Now the county pays the, uh, uh, investment fees to, look at the two that you approved, there's not enough money in the vested forfeiture account type of, as you have, I don't think it's an authorized forfeiture, but even if it was, uh, there's not enough money, because the county is paying, the county doesn't just pay for, uh, they pay the mutual fund fees too.
Okay, which is $24,000 a month, or roughly.
Plus, they pay the other thing, so that's, you're coming close to $800,000 a year that the county, uh, is, um, paying.
If you include the defined benefit out of the OK account, and, and, and that does not have to come out of the OK account. That can come out of the general fund as opposed to the...
I totally agree with you that there does not have to be a transfer into the OK account, okay? But then it would have to come out of the general fund, you're absolutely right.
Right, so the money that, that now is coming out of the OK accounts to pay the defined benefits could come out of the general account as opposed to the general account paying for the defined contribution fees?
Yeah, but if there wasn't enough vested forfeitures, where would the money come back?
Where at a million dollars? We're talking $256,000.
No, no, you get the other...
For $750,000, roll it back up. Who's got the question?
Well, I mean, clearly the retirement board, in my opinion, has the right to refuse to transfer any money into the defined benefit plan. I totally agree with that. Except I think the retirement board has a duty to both plans, not just the defined contribution plan.
And I would agree, and the county general fund would be paying to define...
Suppose the county general fund didn't want to pay?
That's entirely up to them, if the state law says they will. If they want to break state law, then they're more than welcome to do so, I can't...
Actually, it doesn't say that. The scary thing is, and I, I, I haven't gone out of my way, because I'll play my head good, it doesn't happen, but the scary thing says the county can cut benefits to the defined benefit plan if they experience a shoot, a shortfall. The statute says that, that's what scares me. So it's a fact, that's why we've been putting money in for all these years, because we would have had such a shortfall a long time ago, it would have been ridiculous.
Even with, even if we take the, 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 let's, let's call it $600,000, even if we take $600,000 if we quit doing the contribution defined benefit plan, and put that, again, back into the general fund, if, if that's where it's coming from now, then once again, we're, we've got $143,000 left at the end of the fiscal year, and we've already transferred money. So again, I don't understand where the, where the question is, where the money's coming from, it's right there. We're just, instead of paying for the defined benefits out of this, we're paying for it out of the general fund, instead of paying for this out of the general fund, we're paying for the defined benefits. No one loses any money in any direction, which gives us, if, if who's paying for it is the legal authority, then, then that gives us the legal authority to make the decision.
What would happen if we got a year where the forfeitures averaged $10,000 like they did in January? Who would pay the bills then?
What would happen if we, if the general fund goes dry and, and, and we cut all retirement benefits? I mean, we would want it to be set to death. But we, how long has it been since we've had a, a, a year under a million dollars in forfeitures? Does anybody remember one? Because we've not.
Danny?
Uh, there's a history down there toward the bottom.
15 was.
That's fiscal year 15, 14, but under that.
And what was it, Danny?
I'm hearing 10. Uh, 914.
Which still leaves a $300,000, $300, $300,000 additional than what we needed. Going back to 2004?
I think then what we need to do, what you need to do is write up a list of questions and ask the DA. I don't know how the retirement board has the authority to contract with anybody, only the board of county commissioners can contract.
Well, somebody should ask that. Because according to state statute, the state statute that, that was quoted as, as giving or, or taking that authority away from us...
Brian, would you like to take over chairing? Item number 13, by the way.
The state statute, or Title 19, 95, 953.1, says the board of trustees may retain qualified investment managers who rely for the investment of the monies of the retirement system. So I don't know where, where there's even a question whether or not we have the authority to do so. State statute says we do. Shirley Darrell asked for an opinion, although it was the defined benefit plan that she was discussing, and in 91, and got the same answer, that yes, we do have the authority to do so. The reason that she feels lack of aggression stated that she doesn't feel like that, that applies, is because the, the, once again, it's where the money's coming from.
Let Aaron make a comment.
Sure.
I believe part of the problem you might be having is that you're reading the opinions too narrowly. It's not just where the money comes from. The statute requires, um, this particular, um, contract for use particular services to be competitively bid. So you can't just really, uh, read, um, the statute that you're referring to for the retirement board, you also have to refer to the competitive bidding statute.
And I did so.
The competitive bidding statute only specifically references the board of county commissioners making the decision as to the lowest investment bid on a competitive bidding matter.
Okay, so I did, I did look at that as well, because I had that same question, and it made sense to me. It'll take me a minute to dig that one up. Well, even better, yeah, instead of me, instead of me asking individual questions, let's, let's, let's move to the, unless we have some more discussion on this item, I, I would close this item and move to the next.
Okay, it, do we want to close the item with the, the caveat that you're going to list in writing for, for an opinion for the DA?
The next item, I think, asks for a legal opinion, so that's why I'll move to the next.
Okay, is that all right? For us to move to the next item? All right, so item 14, discussion possible action regarding the Oklahoma County Retirement Board Trustees retaining outside counsel regarding the investment manager vendor's collection. This item is requested by General Lively.
So, the, the question I would have is, is do we want to go to the district attorney's office again and ask them for an opinion on something they've already made an opinion for, or do we want to go up to the attorney general and ask them for an opinion? I feel like we've got conflicting opinions from 1991 and today. Uh, the purchasing laws were the same in 91 as they are today, and, and I think that this, that it may be that we go outside and determine what the authority of this board is. Aaron, do you have it?
Yeah.
I would just point out that I don't believe your agenda item is broad enough to vote on whether or not to get an attorney general opinion. Your agenda item specifically references hiring private outside counsel.
It says outside counsel, and, and the attorney general certainly is in his office.
In the what?
It said, and the attorney general certainly is not part of this office, so they would be outside the county.
Outside counsel.
Right. So they'd be outside of the county, so I certainly think that that allows for the attorney general.
By statute, the attorney general's office represents state offices and agencies, so they couldn't be outside counsel to a county board.
All right, I understand that.
If they represent the state, how can they not be outside of the county?
Meaning they don't have statutory authority to advise county officers and employees. By statute, that's delegated to the district attorney's office, not the attorney general's office.
So are you wanting to get private counsel?
Uh, I'd certainly like to consider that, depending upon the board's pleasure.
And what would you want them to do? Just offer a private counsel opinion?
Absolutely.
And would that be considered over a DA opinion?
Well, if, if...
Or an addition?
I mean, it, it would just be multiple attorneys giving multiple opinions on an issue that has, action has already been taken on, to undo the actions would require some sort of court proceedings.
Are you, are you wanting to have, are you wanting to go for an opinion that you have all, most can agree with?
Well, I, I think that we get an outside opinion gives us the license to go get a judicial opinion if that's what we want to do, and we certainly can't do that without, without a, a, a different opinion. And, and certainly if we hire an attorney and we get the same opinion, then that's where we're at. But, but again, I think that there's some conflicting information, that this board does have the authority to, to, to contract who they want by state statute.
Mr. Sound, do you have any?
To manage the fund.
Where would the retirement board get the money to hire this lawyer?
Same place we get the money to hire the consultants that we hired.
It has to be ultimately approved by the board of county commissioners.
Commissioner Ramon, do you have any guidance, didn't it?
Um, well, I mean, I'm trying, I apologize for being late.
Actually, you got your right time.
Yeah, well, I turned around, it's no disrespect, I was hung up in a traffic jam, and I was stuck like a duck. So I was just trying to piece together what you were saying before I got here. Are you, are you saying that you want to have an outside counsel to possibly bring suit against the county?
Potentially, it's, it's, again, the, I think that we need to once and for all determine what the authority of this board is, and, and I believe that, that state statute gives this board authority to select the vendors based on a bid.
Well, Aaron, does that put me in a conflict of interest situation where I need to abstain from this vote?
I don't think so.
Does someone want to make, I don't even know what the vote is asking for, are you asking for outside counsel?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
As, as I believe...
So are you making a motion to hire outside counsel?
Right now, we're open for discussion.
All right.
And, and, and I'm certainly not hearing any, so I will make that motion, that, that the board consider hiring outside counsel to determine whether or not this board has the authority to select the vendor that manages the fund per state statute.
How do we select the attorney? If this should be the vote of the board, does it have to go out to, uh, party, or do we, um, just call it your lunch? Should we set up a vote, and say this is an hourly rate we're willing to pay, and if you're willing to take the offer for that? Or do we just give a blank check, and attorney's hired, and we get the bill of whatever it is?
That'd be awful. All right, look, can I retract my, my motion? Can I do that?
Sure, because you had it seconded.
The, uh, the, the, FOP have offered to possibly finance a private attorney on behalf of the, the deputies, so that's another option that we have without going through the board of county commissioners. And whether or not we could accept, it, I guess the donation does have to go through the board of county commissioners, uh, whether or not we can accept that, how we've moved that through this board.
Well, the, the FOP, for, for any reason, they want to hire a lawyer to, to look into this, and if they want to bring the suit on behalf of a member of the retirement board, they can do that.
Well, I certainly think so, if this board authorizes it, that we have to, that, that at some point we have to stand still on the transition. I think if this board wants to go ahead, then we go ahead, but, but I don't think that we continue with the transition as long as we have the, the question of whether or not the, we have the authority to make the, the choice of the vendor to begin with.
I'm a little, can, Aaron, can you help with this? I'm confused. I thought that all of this was settled, that the DOCC had jurisdiction to do what they did, and that that was an open and closed situation, and, and is that wrong?
I, I will say, I don't, I agree with your statement, and that's why I said that, you know, beyond having competing attorney's opinions, it would take judicial action to undo the decision that has been made.
And how do we get to judicial action without finding an opposing attorney's opinion?
Well, now, that question puts me in a situation of conflict of interest, because now you're asking me to give you advice on how to sue another one of my clients.
I make motion, we deny, uh, hiring an outside counsel.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do you, do you want to have a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Please?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'd like to go around the room, and if you're opposed, or...
I'm sorry.
All right, go, I'll start with you, and we'll go around the room.
Yes, I'm in, I'm in, my motion.
Yes. No.
No. Same. Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
I'm being so bad, aren't I?
Raise your hand if you voted yes.
There you go.
Raise your hand if you voted no.
Four to three.
Four to three. So the motion is carried to not accept outside counsel. All right. Um, we, a board comment. Would anyone like to comment now? Citizen participation.
So if I, um, my name's Larry Grant, for those of you that don't know me, I'm FOP president of the sheriff's office, FOP, which, uh, we have over 300 members. Um, so if I understand what's happened is the county commissioners got together, they voted to change our, uh, retirement plan to somebody else, is that correct? Okay. And that was new about that.
There was a bid system that went out that was notified in public forums, the bids were accepted in public forums, it was posted publicly, it was voted on publicly, and they did what they, they, everything was, they, not being notified wasn't the, the most body's problem, everybody was notified, it was on live TV, it was posted properly, everything was done properly.
Right, and I'm sure it was, I'm not saying that it wasn't, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just trying to clarify.
No, no, please don't, yeah, don't. I mean, I'm sure anything that this board, the board of county commissioners here in Oklahoma County view, I'm sure is proper and done, you know, perfectly right, that's not my question. What I'm asking, I guess, is the fact that this is going to affect the employees that work for Oklahoma County in some form or fashion. I mean, it's got to affect us somehow, and, and that's the big question that a lot of us have. Uh, you know, I used to go and get down the street, soon as I got off my shift, and talk to Stephanie or whoever, and ask personally, face to face, sitting at a desk, what do I do here, what do I do there, what about this, what about that? Is it a good idea to consolidate these types of things? And, and they're very extremely helpful. I, I can't tell you how helpful they've been. And now, I guess, what I'm getting is that I'm going to have to make a phone call out of state in hopes that that person on the other end of the phone is going to advise me on my retirement plan. Is that right? Am I on the right track?
No, there's going to be local representatives to meet you.
Okay, but I heard in the, in the, when it was being discussed, that they were going to open up an office locally.
No, they're going to have people to meet with you here. I mean, we had someone stand up at the commission meeting, he can go back and watch online, and attest it, the actuarial that evaluated the three, or the six plans, rather.
I think the venue or the meeting that I was launching, I think, I don't know if it was the budget board or what it was, but it was, well, the undersheriff was speaking to you, so I don't know if it was the, uh, it wasn't the county commission meeting, I don't believe, but it might have been.
Well, but the, the motion passed it, the board of county commissioners, and there was much discussion, and it's posted online, it seems like, like, you know, and, and I'm sure you're, that, that whatever company is, is going to handle it now will make themselves readily available to everyone that needs to, and I'm sure the county commissioners made great, I mean, looked into it very carefully, and they'll, they'll, I'm sure the company, I'm not personally speaking for this company, because I know nothing about that, but I'm sure they, they were vetted very carefully.
Okay, so commissioner, are you saying that there's going to be local representation for this company?
I asked that specifically.
Did they say an office, or just visiting, or you know?
They just said they make themselves available to meet with the person. They just said they make themselves available to meet a person.
That was one of the questions, and I have a meeting tomorrow night that I might have to answer some questions, and that's one of the reasons why I just wanted to stop in today, get as much as I could, bring back.
Aaron, is it a violation of the RFP if they did not have a local representative here? In their bid, they said they would have a local representative servicing the account. If you watched the initial presentation that that company made, they said they would have local representatives in Oklahoma, and I totally agree with you, if they don't, then they're in violation of the RFP, and if they, and if they're in violation of the RFP, the Commissioners should not sign the contract, in my opinion, okay? Obviously, it'd be up to them, but in my opinion, I don't think they would, I think they expected a local representative there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're bound to have one person show up at these meetings at least, and, and do a limited number of education things at our, at our office, versus an office full of people down there.
Well, that, and that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, because, you know, like I said, I can go after work and go right down the road and talk to them, that's not gonna be the case anymore, because they're not gonna actually have an office. That's, that's what I was asking, if that wouldn't clear-
Change, I think the participation of the reason for it was, was financially, and not just solely on, on any one thing, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure that changes it easy, but I'm sure that the, the new company will do their very best to attract everyone that needs.
Is this going to be, I'm sorry?
Well, just for clarification, that was one of the things I was arguing against. I didn't want to take a hundred million dollars and send it to New York, and take it away from a local company, where we were a big fish in a small pond.
Right.
And the local company now has to lay off a number of employees which they hired to accommodate the county, because we were a big fish in a small pond, and now we're a minnow in the ocean.
I think basically what I, and, and believe it or not, I had a lot of employees watching that, which surprised me, because, I mean, it, it did surprise how many, how many phone calls I got immediately after that, and, uh, so people were starting to take more notice, I guess, you know, but my, the other question I've gotten, and I'll shut up, I'll sit down, uh, is, is this gonna affect our, the contribution that the county puts into our retirement? Because the rumors are flying like you wouldn't believe out there right now. Uh, right now, I think the county puts twelve percent in, are we, are we in jeopardy of maybe that going down?
How would, how would they possibly change that?
Sir, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying rumors are running around.
I'm sorry about the rumors, I can't, that's what, about the rumors, but I'm sure if twelve percent's been happening for a long period of time, I think it would take
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to ask that in this board, that's all. I gotta answer questions.
Aaron, wouldn't, wouldn't that have to be changed? I mean, wouldn't that take a lot to change, the contributions for?
I don't recall if that set out by state statute, the Board of County Commissioners set that level, but, um, yes, it would take huge action.
There's certainly been no discussion at this board to do so.
And nor at the Board of County Commissioners, and frankly, anytime I've ever heard of it being mentioned, which were years tighter than we are in now, budgetarily, that was the easiest way to solve it without having furloughs or reduction in people's current salary, and I argued and fought against it every time, because in my opinion, it's a social contract we entered in when you agreed to take this job, and it'd be disingenuous of us to change the rules mid, mid-game, so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
It won't have my vote to do that.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
And, and when you transferred over back in nineteen ninety or ninety-one, you were told, I know it really was, that twelve percent would be put into your account, uh, so you'd have an interesting issue, in my opinion.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your time and all the effort, yeah, thank you for the, the talk.
Thank you for your comments, are there any other citizens? Okay, new citizen?
Move to Darren.
All in favor? Opposed? Any?